of Adelanto Elementary School District. Today is Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2023. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Moving on to section 1.02, call to order. Ms. LeVey, please take the role.
Trustee Benz.
President.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, present. Corm has been established. The time is 5:30. Moving on to section 104, pleasure of allegiance. Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the law of the state of the American and it's going to be public for which says one nation under your power and to this whole the justice for our own.
Thank you. Moving on to section two, adoption of the agenda. Ms. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, and adjustment in the order of business?
Madam President, I do. For item 13.08, that is academic services conference request. If you go down to the bottom under Governor's Budget Workshop, the date should be January 19th, not the first. And there is no lodging or meals for everyone. So therefore, Mr. Kraus and Dr. Doizen will be paying just for the registration at 3:25. And then Zach Sylvia Carey will be paying for registration, 3:25 for registration and 106 for mileage. That's a total of 431. And then CSCA and ADTA has, they have four members. They will be paying for the registration at 3:25 each, mileage at 106 each, and 500 for sub-cost. That makes it a total of 681 for each of the ADTA and CSCA members going.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Moving on to section 2.02, adoption of the agenda trustees. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Webster, I motion to adopt the agenda.
Turner, I second.
Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
And Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion passed 5-0. Moving on to section three, special recognition. Mr. Kraus?
This is my exciting part of meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, members of the community that are here with us this evening. It's so great to see all of our audience members here this evening. Dr. Doizen and I and President LaFrench are going to go up here. And we're so excited to be able to recognize our 25 and 30-year employees. It's crazy to imagine what was going on 30 years ago and 25 years ago in the world and in California and in our school district. But this evening, we're honored to recognize our members that have been with us for 25 and 30 years. And so, Madam President and Dr. Doizen, if you'll come out to the dais with me.
All right. It's my pleasure to call out our recipients this evening. First, we have Jack Banks, teacher, Victoria McGathen. We have Jesse Cabral, lead custodian, Victoria McGathen. Harold Cole, paraprofessional 2, Columbia Middle School. Angelica Culebro, paraprofessional 2, Gus Franklin. Teresa Espinoza, secretary 2, special education. Mary Lou Evans, paraprofessional 2, Melva Davis Academy of Excellence. Tracy Gordon, teacher, Donald Braddock. Pamela Green, teacher, Gus Franklin. Diane Lynn, secretary 3, George Vapa. Lori McMillan, purchasing technician, fiscal services. Angela Ordinola, teacher, Donald Braddock. Grace Rhodes, secretary 3, Ted Vick. Martha Smith, paraprofessional 2, Melva Davis Academy of Excellence. Jeffrey Weehy, custodian, Mesa Linda Middle School. Board of Trustees, if you would join us in the front for a picture. And if we could give, this is 25 years. So if we could give them a big round of applause.
Dr. Doizen, you do a great job announcing our staff members for 25 years. I have the distinct pleasure of our 30-year employees. And it's just amazing to think again back 30 years ago, what many of us were doing. It's unbelievable, you know, that we're here and we've had employees have been with us. We have many employees have been with us over 30 years. But, you know, the first person I have to say I've had the pleasure of working with since I've been in the district. His dedication to our district is unparalleled. Every day he gets up and gives it his all. And his email signature says always the best if you ever get an email from him. And he works tirelessly. And I'll tell you how dedicated he is this evening. It's his wife's birthday. He was here with him. And they are both here in the audience this evening to get this award. So I want to thank her as well for supporting Richard Crutch. And if he could come up here, and we'd love to congratulate him on 30 years in the district. Congratulations, so. Come on.
She's not looking at me, but they want you to come up too. Come on, Mrs. Crutchett.
And then from Eagle Ranch, and I want to say thank you to Principal Wilson for meeting the audience this evening and everyone from Eagle Ranch to support our next person, Ms. Deborah Lopez, who's been with the district a paraprofessional for 30 years in our district. So we want to congratulate her service for 30 years. I know she probably hasn't been at Eagle Ranch that whole time, but she's been with our district. So we're really, really happy to have her with us this, for 30 years. So let's give her a round of applause.
And if we could have our Board of Trustees come to the front. All right. And again, this is 30 years. Let's give them one more round of applause.
Sharon Engelfil. I have to recognize she's about to leave. And I wanted to, I wanted to say hello before you left. Sharon is also a long-term employee in the district. And she served as a secretary for a business services department for a number of years. And she retired. And I just want to give a shout out to you. Good to see you. You look well.
Thank you. Moving on to section four, cabinet reports. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Yes.
Is it question?
Yes. Can you hear me? I don't think I'm on.
Hello? Testing, testing.
That's it.
Testing. Ah. Thank you to our wonderful IT department. Today is actually National Techie Day. I don't know if Mr. Sinatra knows that, but look it up, Mr. Sinatra. So there actually is a day for techies. And I don't know what we would do at our board meetings without our tech department out here supporting all of the technological needs of our staff. So thank you to Mr. Sinatra, Mr. Duran this evening. And again, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and everyone still with us this evening out on Zoom land and in the audience. This evening, where to start? Where to start? We just had a board meeting last Tuesday. So this is a fairly quick one from the last time because we have a lot of events in October. And so our next board meeting is not going to be until the end of October. So I just had a few things I wanted to brush up on and announce. So one of the things, as you're well aware, we had our tragic accident last week. And we are working on campaigns to educate our community on bus stop safety, traffic safety. We met with the city of Adelanto yesterday. And the sheriff's department had a collaborative discussion on how to make our streets safer, not only around our bus stops, but in the city of Adelanto. And we will be having those discussions with the city of Victorville as well. And again, I want to encourage everyone to slow down, follow the laws when it relates to buses that have their red lights flashing, stop, stop at stop signs. I know there was some traffic enforcement out there this week and last week. So those of you that roll through the stop signs, you'll probably end up getting a ticket. But just be aware of your surroundings and when there's children present especially, please be paying attention. So we just wanted to announce that. We have been celebrating at several of our schools Hispanic Heritage Month. Westside Park had a wonderful celebration as one of our examples of celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. So we're excited about that. They'll also be presenting later on tonight. So we have Ms. Pantoa, Principal Pantoa in our audience this evening. Thank you for being here for that. We had the opportunity to have a job fair at the Mall of Victor Valley. There were several businesses that were there. I want to thanks to our HR department. We had Gloria there. Alejandro was there. I stopped by. Trustee Turner joined me as well, visiting our booth at the Mall of Victor Valley for jobs. And so we're excited. It was very well attended. A lot of people there looking for jobs, a lot of vendors there as well. So thank you to our HR department for hosting that. October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so if we don't ever talk about these kind of things, then there's not that much awareness. So I know you'll see a lot of campaigns out there by school districts and police departments and cities about October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I tried to get a pink tie, but I was unsuccessful to get one today. But I wanted to wear one because pink is the color for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So just be aware of that. And our thoughts and prayers go out to anyone that has been affected by breast cancer, any other cancer that's out there. October 2nd was an opportunity to celebrate our custodians. It was Custodian Day. And I want to thank Brandon Rogers, who was here earlier. I don't know if he's still with us. Oh, there he is in the back. So I want to say thank you to Brandon because yesterday was Custody Appreciation Day. And he actually went around to all of our custodians and gave them a special treat to recognize the hard work that they do throughout every day at our school sites. And so thank you, Brandon, for helping to facilitate recognition of our custodians out there. We have this coming Saturday, we're excited to break ground on our pool out back. It's been closed for many years. Construction is ongoing and Richard has already left. But I want to thank Richard and his team for helping to facilitate that. So we will have a grand opening this coming, groundbreaking this coming Saturday. We anticipated to have it open by May of 2024. If all goes well and the weather cooperates, then that's our timeline, estimated timeline right now. So we'll be excited to be able to offer that to our students, our community when it gets back open up, hopefully in May. So we're excited to be able to do a ribbon cutting in May. But then again, this Saturday is our groundbreaking ceremony. So we're excited about that. Also, on the 7th, we have our Fall Festival. The city of Victorville is hosting a Fall Festival by City Hall in the city of Victorville. Adelanto Elementary School District is proud to be a vendor, so to speak, over there. We will have a booth. We will have tables. We will be there from 1 to 7. Come out and see us if you're out there and, you know, feel free to stop by, bring the family by. There'll be a lot of vendors out there from various organizations. But we're excited that Adelanto Elementary School District can be a part of our community. It's just another way to engage our parents and our families and potential staff members out there in the community. So we're excited about that. Coming up next week is fall break. So I know it's a big reprieve for a lot of you to take a little bit of break, staff members and students and families. So be aware that next week we will have our fall break all next week. So hopefully you have some fun activities. And also, if you haven't seen it, Dr. Doizen will probably mention the intercession that we will have during next week during fall break for our students. And so we're excited to be able to offer that. It was mentioned at last week's board meeting. We'll make sure that that is on our website if it's not already and then put out through parent squares from all the sites. We also have a, let's see, on October 14th, it's a busy month, I'm telling you. We're excited though with all of these things going on. We have a special board workshop on October 14th. But also for all of you science people like me, maybe I'm just a big nerd. I'm not sure. Anybody know what else is going on October 14th? You need a special pair of sunglasses for a very rare solar eclipse. So all you students out there, it's on a Saturday. If you're listening, mark your calendars. Get your, don't do not look at the eclipse without a special pair of glasses. But they have them. I was at the local Circle K today. Guess what? They're selling them. I couldn't believe it. My gas station is selling solar sunglasses. There they are. So make sure you put that on your calendar. That's always a fun thing. October 19th is the great shakeout. We have our statewide earthquake drill at all of our school sites. So we're excited to be participating in that. We also have Red Ribbon Week coming up in the end of October. So we're excited about participating in saying no to drugs. And then I wanted to give a shout out to ADTA for the birthday wishes and goodies that they provided. Generator and Brian Hahn were kind enough to, on behalf of ADTA, we had several birthdays last week and one of them was mine on Saturday. And they were kind enough to drop off a basket. And I was able to share the goodies with staff. So definitely thank you for that. And then last but not least, I want to shout out to Columbia Middle School. IT is going to queue up a video for us. You know, one of the things that we're very aware of is that suicide amongst our students is prevalent across the nation. And you never know who's going through something. And so one of the great things that the staff and students and administration at Columbia did was they actually made a video using students and staff from Columbia that wanted to participate and make this video and then share it with their peers. And so this evening, I just wanted to share it with our community because it is so touching to see that our students have needs that we may not even think about. And they were brave enough and courageous enough to participate in this video. So Mr. Duran and Mr. Sinatra, if you'll play the video.
I have my ups and downs, just like everybody else.
I can be hard to figure out.
I like my privacy.
I don't like you leaning over my shoulder all the time.
But you know your friend's better than everybody else.
So if you think your friend is acting different than usual.
Getting really mad.
Not able to sleep or sleeping too much.
Shouting friends out.
Giving their stuff away.
Or suddenly not doing stuff they used to love.
It might just be school.
Or even something more.
Your friend might be depressed.
Not just feeling down, but seriously depressed.
Maybe your friend's thinking about suicide.
It happens more than you think, more than it should.
And people say I had no idea.
I thought it was just a phase they were going through.
I never thought they would do it.
I wish they'd come to me.
I wish they had said something.
So if you think your friend is acting different.
If they seem like a different person.
Say something.
Say what's wrong?
How can I help?
And ask them straight out.
Are you thinking about killing yourself?
It doesn't hurt to ask.
In fact, how often people are thinking about suicide.
They want someone to ask.
Maybe you're afraid you'll make it worse if you ask.
Like you'll put the idea in their head.
Believe me, it doesn't work that way.
Does not hurt to ask.
In fact, the best way to keep a teenager from committing suicide is to ask, are you thinking about suicide?
What if they say yes?
Or maybe, or sometimes.
Well, here's what you don't say.
That's crazy.
Don't be such a drama queen.
Too much of this.
That person is not worth killing yourself over.
It's not going to solve anything.
You're just trying to get attention.
You're not going to kill yourself.
What you do say is.
I'm sorry that you're feeling so bad.
How can I help?
We're going through this together.
Let's keep you safe.
A lot of people think about killing themselves.
Adults and kids.
Most of them never tried, but some of them do.
So if your friend says.
I'd be better off dead.
I can't live with this.
I'm going to kill myself.
Take her seriously.
Find someone they can talk to about it.
Someone who knows how to help.
Talk to a counselor.
A teacher.
Or an adult you can trust.
But don't just let it drop.
Make sure that your friend always has someone to turn to.
Someone they trust.
Make a list together.
Write down three, four, or five names.
Put a suicide hotline number on there too.
Have them keep that list in their wallet so they always know where to turn.
We all have our ups and downs, but sometimes it's more than that.
If you think something is wrong, the only way to find out is to ask straight out.
Don't wait until you're sure.
Trust your gut.
Because it never hurts.
And it can make a big difference.
All the difference.
It's your friend's life.
I appreciate, Madam President, members of the board, watching that video. It is heart wrenching to think about, but every day in the United States, many middle school and high school students contemplate or do commit suicide. And so one suicide is one too many. And if we can do something to help prevent that, and I appreciate the administration, the teachers, the staff, and the students over at Columbia Middle School for making that video. And then the suicide hotline again for everyone out there is 988. Write it down, pass it around, get it out there everywhere. We have it posted in all of our schools. We have posters out there and all of our school sites as much as possible. And the more awareness that we put out there, then they can seek help if they are really feeling, you know, in a certain way. And so again, I appreciate your time on that. And that completes my comments. I'd like to turn it over now to Dr. Doizen to give us an update on academic services.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kraus. Good evening, President LaFrench, our Board of Trustees, our AESD staff, families, and community. I'd like to take this time to share just a few updates on behalf of our academic services team. We do look forward to celebrating our 10 PBIS award-winning schools tomorrow in Apple Valley for the county awards celebration at 4:00 PM. We do have intercession. Mr. Kraus mentioned that earlier. We do have intercession open for all of our students. If you are interested, please register with your local schools AYA. That's, those are our after-school partners to sign up. So I do believe, I haven't heard it's, it's closed. So if you are interested, please do sign up for that. That's a great thing. And we will have that available not only during fall break, but also winter break and spring break as well. Today, our sites presented their first look. We're presented with their first look at iReady, which will be coming in January. We have an extensive rollout plan that involves in-person training at the sites, also at the administrator level and also at the district level. We will be learning this new assessment tool together. And we look forward to sharing the results and the highlights as we working to align our systems academically. Academic Services has released our October 16th PD Day offerings. So please register on our new OMS system. This system helps us to track attendance, what we offer. Plus, you get to see how many seats are actually available in a particular course. So on October 16th, we will be offering full-day sessions in, in the following areas. We have math fluency and number sense, place value, multi-digits, phonemic awareness and phonics. We have restorative practices. We have music and visual arts. We have AI and blended learning, physical education for K through six teachers. And we also have creating a responsive classroom environment and a special session for our special education teachers. So please sign up. They're open for you to self-select which course would best suit your needs as a teacher or certificated staff member. Additional highlights for human resources. So they are actively involved in negotiation season. Actually, both are certificated and classified. We currently have 135 substitute teachers on our sub-list. So we just keep going. I know almost every day I'm signing those. So if you know someone out there who wants to sign up to be a substitute teacher, please have them come see our district because we are always looking for the best of the best. We also have 164 volunteers who've been approved for the 2324 school year so far. And then we have 124 classified substitutes who are actively on our sub-list. So lastly, I just want to wish Mr. Kraus a happy belated birthday. And thank you, actually, we're like two days apart. So I'm the 28th and he's the 30th. But I want to thank everyone for their birthday wishes, our ADTA as well. And I want to wish all of our staff a restful fall break.
And that, thank you, Dr. Doizen, Madam President. That completes cabinet reports this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to section five, staff reports and presentations.
Yes, Madam President, we're excited to welcome Ms. Adriana Pantoa to the podium to talk about all the great things going on at Westside Park Elementary School. Ms. Pantoa.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Kraus, Cabinet, Families and Community Members. My name is Adriana Pantoa and I'm the proud principal at Westside Park Elementary School. This evening, I am honored to share with you the amazing things that are happening at Westside Park. Thank you. I wasn't sure I had to do myself. We are overjoyed to share that Westside Park has been recognized for California PBIS Platinum Level. We're just so excited. We have worked extremely hard to make sure our school is a safe, fun, a learning environment. I invite you to please take a look at the pictures in front of you. I want you to focus at the students, parents, and staff faces. You see smiles before school and after school. We have incorporated many of the strategies that we have learned from the Rock Clark Academy, such as playing music throughout the day to lift students' spirits. Adding student, we also added students' images to build self-worth and allowing students to be creative in how they learn. Social, emotional, and cultural proficiency lessons are taught to support emotional needs of all our students and staff. Westside Park School continues to be the showcase for the neighboring district as well as our district within ourselves. Our focus for literacy continues. Our focus for literacy continues to be strategies for learning to read, building fundamental skills, and guided reading. For math, we are focusing on concepts and procedures, math standards for mathematical practices. Everything we do is infused with social, emotional learning. We have Hegarty coaches teaching our students, our teachers fundamental skills to create a solid foundation for reading success. We have writing coaches teaching our teachers how to use thinking maps as a visual language for students to organize their thinking in all academic areas. We have continued the One School, One Book program to promote the love for reading. One book at a time. Parents, all staff, classified and certificated, and students read the book together and receive prizes for answering comprehension questions. Teachers model reading fluency and focus on literacy strategies. The whole school has one shared reading experience that continues to their home. At this time, if I could, I would like just to, you guys to see how amazing our students are doing with reading. Our data from early literacy start and Devils Assessment shows that we have, what we have implemented is working. In the videos, you will see students practicing the sound spelling cards to be fluency in their letter sounds recognition. Our students have the confidence to read and are now reading to learn, starting with from Kinder all the way to fifth grade. Just a little bit more so you guys, I couldn't bring all the students here, but I brought the videos to you. So yes, you can see, you can hear our students reading fluently. They're really comprehending what they're reading. They're moving to the writing stage now, so we're really excited. As you know, we did exit CSI, which really shows that we are making a huge growth. We, we had the visit for CDE, and we were so excited to, they were actually looking at the stuff we were doing, and they want us to share it so they could share with other districts and other schools in the state. So that was really, really honoring. At this moment, I would like to call Ms. Castillo. She is here, she is a parent on our campus, and she would like to tell you how it feels, what she sees, and what she hears at Westside Park.
Good evening. Board of Trustees, administrators, staff, parents of the community. My name is Julie Castillo, and I am an involved parent volunteer for both Melva Davis and Westside Park since January of 2019. I am here tonight to talk about Westside Park. I have to be honest to say that initially, as I saw the school rating was not too good, I was very concerned about my child, on my children's academic learning and what they could have encountered. But thankfully, all those concerns and mindset have definitely changed with the many positive changes I have seen throughout the years. I would like to mention a few of those things, if I may, of course. I want to begin by saying that our principal, Adriana Pantoja, is the best. Nothing to Melva Davis, but, and I want to say that the one reason that would cover all of it, of why she is the best, to me, was that despite the fact that she had no help from an assistant principal for almost two years, she was able to manage herself, to be present at every situation, everything at school, and for everyone. And I believe that that Platinum Award that they, our school received, could say it all, a lot of it. For this, staff and some of us parents have treated Ms. Pantoja with some coffee drinks, some conchitas, or just a simple phone call to check in whenever that she's not present. Because her absence is, it's very noticeable. Thankfully, she has the help that she has been desiring for a while now. In the mornings, the administrators and the staff have alternate to greet the children as they walk through the gates with a good morning, a smile, or a fist pump. They play music in the quad area with the purpose of lifting up the children's spirit, even when having a bad morning. I can say this from my own children's experience. I personally sing along with the songs when I'm walking up on the gate, so. Many teachers also greet their students while in the morning lines before headed to their classrooms. The school is always looking and working on what else they can do to bring, to meet the children's learning needs. For example, the tutoring, the intervention sessions they do throughout the year. And my favorite part was the Love for Reading program with the one book, One School, One Book, which has allowed our children to learn to read and gain the love for reading, helping them improve on their own reading, which my children have benefit from as well. Additionally, they've been able to build their own libraries at home with the light, with the books that they've been given. And they also been having monthly coffee with the principals, ELAC, students' like council meetings. At times, we've been allowed to walk in through the classrooms to visually see what they're working with our childrens during MTSS. And we've, we have the privilege to also look around to all the different materials and furniture that our children have access to. They also keep up with communication platforms with the school sign, the school banner outside, parent squares, school websites, automated reminder phone calls from the principal, even like, okay, we're having, you know, the fall break, here it comes. Phone calls from Ms. Pantoja over and over, depending on the amount of children you have in school. Also, they are looking for ways to keep our children in a safe environment, interested and motivated, while feeling loved, cared for, understood, and supported. I personally believe that when children are interested in a topic and are in a safe environment, their willingness to come to school every day to learn is a joy to witness. As a parent, I feel safe leaving my children, supported, helping my children succeed academically, and joyful knowing that Westside Park, excuse me, will do everything in their power for my children to feel safe, loved, and cared for. Really, what else can I say? I simply feel blessed, and I am a Wildcat proud parent. Thank you.
That was not planned. I had no idea what she was going to say. At this time, I also would like to welcome Ms. Mockler. She is here to speak about the successes she's seen in her classroom, especially with reading and math.
My name is Deborah Mockler. I am a special education teacher for, and this is my 16th year at Westside Park. This is our third year using Hegarty Phonics, and I have noticed such a difference with my students' decoding abilities. They are excited when someone comes into the classroom. When Mrs. Pantoja comes in, they love to show her the words that they can read, sight words that are on the board, vocabulary words, and they're just showing off now. We've been using thinking maps to organize thoughts and writing. My students are writing sentences. They're able to talk their way through the map. They can organize, and we are beginning to write paragraphs. The One School, One Book is near and dear to my heart because I've been doing novel studies with my students for a few years now. And they, not only is their home library expanding, but it's nice to be able to communicate with all of the students on campus, walking through and asking them how they like the book, what's their favorite part, because everyone is on the same page. My students love novel studies. And in fact, I already have students going to the first AR party because the comprehension skills are building. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
We are also excited to continue and to partner up with the PK Institute. We are going to partner up with them so that we could continue with their parent workshops, really looking at how to support our parents and teach them how to make this a homeschool connection. As well, I want to give out, shout out to AYA and the Millionaire Mind Kids for continuing to support the after school care. They're bringing so many activities, so many amazing things to keep our children involved, safe in an environment while parents are working. So we're really excited about that. And our final finality is Ms. Castillo and her son, Juan Castillo. They would like to do a little dance that we performed on our Hispanic Heritage Assembly last Monday. So they should be coming out in a second. While we wait, would a trustee like to say something?
I'll say something. Well, I want to say that the first time I watched the video from Columbia, I watched it again and again, probably watched about three times in a row. And I was so proud of our students. And to see something and to say something, they have all these little slogans out there, right? And I was saying to myself when they were sharing that it's okay to ask your friend. I wish that, you know, adults did that more. You know, it's okay for you not to have a good day. It's okay for you to be able to say, hey, here's a number, or check on someone, or you see someone in the next cubby or the next office, and they're not feeling right. Instead of saying, well, why did they come to work today? You know, there could be something going on. But for students to see them, I was so proud of them, just standing tall and speaking, that I watched it again. And I watch it because, you know, I say to myself that there's a lot of transitioning when you're in middle school and in high school. It's a lot that children are going through that they have to navigate by themselves. And to have friends to be able to say, hey, look out and say, hey, you haven't spoken in the last couple of days, or you've done this, and you know, you know, ask what do you need, ask your friend, you know. I hope that you know that all the schools get to watch it. I like it.
Anyone else want to say anything while we wait?
I'll send. I'm gonna start dancing in a bit. Well, I first want to, well, I guess since we're going to talk about the video, I did have a friend who he did kill himself. And it never occurred to me to ask questions. So when he did it, I was like, oh, my gosh. I just thought he was being emotional, you know. And so, and it just shows that we need, need to be nice to each other. But yes, to ask the questions, you know, just ask, hey. I mean, it seems so simp, simple. But I guess with my gen, generation, we don't ask questions. We just keep going, going. So it's, I think it was excellently done. Excellently done, you know, just to bring out those, those questions. And I guess I want to say thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I am so excited, excited how well the school is do, doing with your plat, Platinum. I mean, I think that that's the high, highest, right?
Yes, it is.
The Platinum is the high, highest. I think they're, they're gonna have to make, make up a new, new one just for you guys. You know, like, you know, West, Westside Park, Park stat, status, you know?
Yes, of course.
So just thank your, 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 your staff for, for, for us. And, and to have the parents come and say those things, I know it must mean a lot.
It does, it really does.
When they appreciate those things.
And our staff is just like I'm saying, they're really seeing all their hard effort, everything they've been putting in place, so they're seeing and working. And it's amazing to really say, we are a Platinum school. So we're really excited about that.
That's excellent. Congratu- graduation.
Thank you. Thank you. I know Ms. Castillo is making a sign.
Okay. We're ready without further ado.
And again, this is Juan Castillo, fifth grade, from Westside Park Elementary School. I'm Ms. Julie Castillo. Thank you, just a little something of the celebration we had last Monday for our Heritage, Latino Heritage or Hispanic Heritage Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call up Mr. Jesse Landry, who is going to be doing a brief presentation on the CFD bond issuance. And you know, we're excited that we have the opportunity to raise funds for our facilities. We have four CFD, CFD 1, 2, 3, and 4. And this evening, he'll be talking about Community Facilities District Number 4. If you've noticed down by Melva Davis, West Creek, and Gus Franklin, there's a lot of homes going up over there. And so as they build out, one of the things that we will benefit from is the issuance of CFD bonds. So this evening, Mr. Landry, if you want to take it away and just update us on where we're at with our bond issuance.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kraus. And good evening, members of the board, district staff, and members of the public. Excited to be back in front of you here today. If you guys recall, I was, I was here about three months ago, and we received direction from the board to move forward with this process of compiling all the documentation. So here to provide an update and answer any questions. So here to provide an update and answer any questions as the board considers later this evening, the potential approval of a bond issuance resolution and supporting documents. That's kind of the last step before we move forward with the finalization of this issuance. So a quick update, again, I think Mr. Kraus provided a pretty detailed update there, the location and things. But this was, this was an old project, was formed back in 2006. It sat there dormant through the recession. DR Horton purchased the property, they came to the district and said, we'd love to build this, but we need to make some changes to the existing CFD parameters. The board took action in early 2022, they, they completed modifications for the CFD. And then the board approved the JCFA at that meeting in June. And then in June 13th, they also brought in, said, hey, go ahead and move forward with it, with bringing on a team and retaining a team to prepare all the documentation. So over this last three and a half months, district staff, the various consultants that were hired on have been working tirelessly to prepare all this documentation in consultation with the developer, DR Horton, to get all the documentation ready that needs, that's going to be needed for a prospective bondholder to actually purchase the bonds. They want to know everything that's going on in the project and where DR Horton's at and the status of development. So along with that, here's a little update on the status of development. DR Horton's continuing to move through the project. I think we were probably around 50% maybe permitted last time when I came here. And now you can see we're over 75% permitted in the project. And then closings are over the 60% threshold as well. So they've been making good progress here despite, you know, what we hear on national news about the rising interest rate environment, buyers are still out there, they're still buying properties. So one of those things, one of the things that that does help is, you know, the further along in the development process, that diversifies the special taxes and it diversifies the bond issuance for a potential buyer, that'll help us get lower interest rates. So another quick update, we talked about this before, but there's two tax components over this property. There's a tax A for school facilities and a tax B for city and water district facilities. We're, we're basically issuing those two series at the same time simultaneously. That's going to save us costs of issuance rather than issuing one and then coming back a few years later and issuing another. We're going to do it as, as one transaction in order to save some money and have some efficiencies created through that. As we were moving forward with the process, the city came to us and said, we can't spend all the proceeds within a three year time period. So what that is required is a third component that's going to be a taxable component just over the city and water district facilities portion. So this doesn't affect the school districts portion at all, it just affects their portion. So what we've been working with is trying to, working with council and we have a conversation coming up with district staff to try to figuring out some structuring options, options to lower down the taxable component. Taxable bonds cost are more expensive, have a higher interest rate than tax exempt bonds. So it would be our goal to get the taxable piece as small as possible. Even though that's just on the city and water district side, it's still, Adelanto School District is still issuing the, the bonds on behalf of the CFD Number Four, so we want to try to have low borrowing cost if possible. So on this slide here, I've, I've listed some of the estimated sources and uses of funds down at the bottom. $4.6 million would be the project funds that will be available to the district. That's estimated right now based on current market conditions. Those things are going to change. We should know that, we should have final numbers within the next couple of weeks and we'll know the exact dollar amount. So I wanted to bring up this slide, we talked about this last time that I, so to confirm what I mentioned last time, Columbia Middle School and West Creek, those are the schools of attendance of the CFD. So those would be the direct areas where we could spend money. But after hearing from the board and talking with Mr. Kraus, we went back and we looked at, what are they, and how does the enrollment work at Melva Davis and Gus Franklin? It looks like it is a district wide enrollment. So they do service the different students from across the district boundaries. So that allows us the opportunity to also fund projects that are needed at those two sites. So I wanted to confirm that for the board because I remember that question coming up. So we don't need to lock in today, we're not tied, our hands aren't tied on how we can spend the money, but we have these options available now as, as we move forward. We will, when I, we're going to be working to identify some projects early on and upfront. And then obviously those were never, we're not tied to those. We just need to make sure that we spend them within a certain amount of time. So as far as next steps, originally it provided that the board approves the resolution here tonight, we would move forward with posting the preliminary official statement. We were hoping to do that on Thursday, but DR Horton and their corporate structure and corporate review is delaying us a little bit. So we're expecting at this point to likely post the POS next week, price the week after, so around the 18th or 19th. At that point, the total proceeds, interest rates are locked in. So that'll be the, the situation where the district makes, district staff makes a decision to accept the bonds at these interest rates. From the guidance of all the, the district finance team members will help with that process. And then ultimately we close the bonds and have proceeds delivered in early to mid November. So that's the point where that 4.6 million, give or take, depending on interest rates, would be available to the district to fund projects. So that's all I had here for tonight. I want to open it up for any questions that the board might have about the process, next steps and what we're seeing in the market.
Or does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do have a quick question. The proceeds that come off of this bond, they do have to be sent, spent specifically at those school sites for upgrades, correct?
They need to be spent on projects that have a useful life of at least five years or more. And those projects need to provide some benefit to the residents that live within the CFD. So that's why we usually pick, you know, as a first priority, the schools of direct attendance boundaries. There's some, some changes that could potentially be made. They can also be spent on central support and admin. But in talking with district staff, it looks like there's a number of projects at all four of those sites that were identified that'll be able to find good use of the 4.6 million that could be produced.
Perfect, thank you so much.
I do have a question. Could you reiterate? You mentioned lowering interest rates on the property. And you also mentioned that the city will assume that responsibility based on water and sewer?
So this CFD has the two tax components. And one of those tax components is to fund city and water district facilities. So that's City of Victorville and then the Victorville Water District. And they entered into a JCFA or Joint Communities Facilities Agreement with CFD Number Four. So the proceeds from this will fund school district facilities on the tax A side and then the city and water. Now, for the taxpayer who lives in the community, whether we have a higher interest rate or lower interest rate, it doesn't affect them. Their tax is set at a certain dollar amount pursuant to a rate and method of apportionment. So their taxes won't fluctuate up or down based on how our interest rates will be. What the interest rate will affect is the amount of proceeds that'll be produced. So if, if the city and water district, you know, say that we have to issue some taxable component, what that'll mean is less proceeds are going to be available to fund city and water district facilities.
Okay. And I, and I say that because I just received notification from the City of Victorville that they're increasing their rates. And I'm wondering, is it based on this? I know we haven't approved anything yet, but is, is it based on the CFDs?
No, no, you know, they're, yeah, yeah, their, their increases related to rates are just, we're seeing that across the board with all public agencies, cities, water districts, the counties. They're all having increased fees and it's similar to what the, the struggles that the school districts are dealing with. Construction costs and labor have just continued to skyrocket over the last several years. You know, there's been supply chain issues and things like that have been, that have increased the cost of providing facilities to the community. But the CFD doesn't affect that in, in any way. And really what it does is it lowers down the amount of proceeds from the CFD if, if we have to issue this taxable component. The reason why that got generated is because the city and water district have said they can't spend all the proceeds within this, within a certain amount of time. They couldn't certify to that. And we need to be able to certify that the bonds can be issued within a certain time period in order for the bond council to issue a tax exempt opinion. And that tax exempt opinion is really helpful for us. It allows us to have those lower borrowing costs.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Just want to make a comment. Thanks for your presentation and thanks for following up with us from the previous questions we had.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we'll look forward to delivering at least to district staff, the final results of the sale and the pricing. And then, you know, looking forward to being able to take these last few steps as we've been working over the last three months to get here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to section six, closed session declaration. We'll be taking items 6.02 through 6.04 into closed session. Section seven, public testimony before closed session. 7.01, the public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session items, agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Mr. Kraus, do we have anyone from ADTA that would like to speak?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Jennifer Rader, President of ADTA, to the podium this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you very much. I'd like to begin by thanking again the employees that have celebrated 25 and 30 years. It's a wonderful thing to have that kind of longevity in this district. It makes us really start to feel like a family when we know each other that long. It's, it's a very good thing to be in this district for 25, 30 years. I'm in between that, I'm at 28 right now. Want to start with that. This January, there will be a CPAC conference and Mr. Han is on the planning committee for that. We would like to invite you to consider attending it with, with us. Be a way of, you could use your conference money to come to this conference. It'll be in January at the California Hotel in Anaheim. And it behooves us all to have us all understand what is involved with health and wellness planning and the many facets of care that goes into our healthcare plans. So I have for you, I'll come real quickly and bring out flyers. There was an edit, there was a typo on the, on the thing, they've all been corrected and it'll be corrected in further things that come out later on. The first day includes a special treat. You get to go to California Adventure. If you get there early, it's an early bird treat thing, part of the conference. The conference is from January 17th through the 19th. So I really, really encourage you to use, choose to use your conference money that way. Okay, um, we have been noticing a bit of a breach of security, at least at my campus. And I'm not sure if it's happening at one, it might be happening at more. The after school program uses the NPR to have kids coming out, come out and go. And a lot of times they leave that door open and it has left it vulnerable to strangers being on campus. So we want to be careful of that. The other thing is that there are charging, there, there are outdoor outlets outside the NPR and outside the office. I imagine for some reason they need to have an outdoor outlet, but we have people coming along and just camping there, sitting there and charging their cell phones all hours of the day and night. And it's very unsettling to come out of a classroom or come out of the school when I'm going to my parking lot at six or 6:30 in the evening. And there's a person sitting, charging their phone right outside the, the door. So it's a little, it seems like a safety issue a little bit and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We can maybe figure out the details of how we can work with that later on. I just want to let you know, it's also draining our electricity. I mean, the district is paying for that electricity and that's not really appropriate. So I wanted to talk to you about ADTA giving books away at this year, at this month's fall festivals all around the district. We're going to have an ADTA table, we'll be talking to parents. We have a grant from CTA, Community Involvement Engagement Grant. So we have books we're going to give to the kids. Every child who comes will get a book in their hand from Scholastic. And it's a, it's going to be a really fun way to, to get our name out there to let people know that, that ADTA is a teachers union that cares about the kids. I also wanted to thank you for the thermostats that are in our rooms now. I know they're not in all the rooms across the campus because I know, or across the district. Cause I know that our campus doesn't have it everyone. But we used to have a button on the wall that we had to push after hours to get the air to come back on. And that's been replaced with a thermostat that shows the numbers. It shows what the temperature is, it shows what the number could be. The only thing is that 15 minutes after the kids leave, that pops up to 90 degrees. It can go up to as high, it, it won't because we're not in that kind of weather right now, but it can go as high as 90 degrees in the room. So the air cuts off. So if I'm staying there late, if anyone's staying there late, they've got to go back and, and adjust it again. I'm not sure how long it lasts, maybe half hour or an hour. And I think it costs a lot more electricity and a lot more energy to cool down a hot room than it does to maintain a, a cool room, relatively cool. You don't have to be, it doesn't have to be 72 with no one in the room when the kids have left and some teachers leave. But some of us don't, many of us that we're staying after for an appropriate amount of time to get our, our duties discharged. And for it to pop up to 90 is, is kind of, maybe 75 or 78 would be more reasonable. As I said, it's, it's more expensive to cool down a, a hot space than it is to keep it steady. And I checked in the winter time, it goes down as low as 55 and then comes up to 70 during the day so that we can keep it warm enough for the kids. And 68 to 70 is plenty warm enough, but to go all the way down to 55 is again quite cold. So that was, that I have on those notes. I wanted to discuss with you the, or I wanted to actually talk a little bit about the PD day that's being planned. And I thank Dr. Dwyzen for planning it with so many options. There seems to be a bit of a disconnect though, because there are enough classes for all the teachers, but they have limited options for certain grade levels. There are three rooms capped at 30 for sped teachers. And I don't think we have 90 teachers in our sped, in our sped program. There are two rooms for a math, second, third grade and one room for a TK. PE, which all of us have to teach, and it would be really good to get a nice in-service on PE, is only available in one room for 30 people. Responsive classrooms, one, one, one room for, and that's something we can all use, all the district could use. Artificial intelligence, probably the chat GPT, I'm not sure what's being taught there. That sounds wonderful, but there's only 60 people can take advantage of that. Music and art is in one room, restorative practices is in one room. There are three rooms for fourth and fifth grade phonemic awareness and, and one room for second and third grade phonemic awareness. So I, I was able to choose a class that I needed, but I don't think that's true, especially for our middle school teachers. We've had a little bit of chatter on the ADTA page about that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I think that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, do we have anyone for CSCA?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Diane Lynn, President of CSCA, to the podium this evening.
Good evening, Madam President, La French, trustees, Superintendent Kraus, Cabinet, Dr. Dwyzen, classified staff, certificated staff and all others in attendance and on Zoom. First of all, congratulations to all of our loyal and dedicated 25 and 30 year employees. What a great accomplishment. We, the CSCA's negotiating team, have some concerns about how negotiations are going. We, the CSEA's negotiating team, have some concerns about how negotiations are going regarding the district preparedness and their ability to make decisions. At the negotiations table, in addition to that, there's seems to be an issue of making statements regarding wages. For instance, bus drivers were told they were going to be getting a significant increase. However, the district is now backpedaling. Furthermore, the district is once again stalling on reclassifications from twenty-one, twenty-two. Again, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Now they are claiming they are concerned about the cost of conducting business by paying members a fair wage. That a fair wage to that they work, which was approved in March twenty-twenty-three. And just district at negotiations are telling us district cannot afford increasing their wages, which was previously approved by both parties. The district should make good what was previously approved by both parties and also have a plan for all the other employees that haven't had an opportunity to address this. Specifically, the members impacted are fourteen librarians, twenty-five bus drivers, and three others. We have been requesting a classification job salary study for five years and haven't had one since two thousand and eight. We ask that this board give direction to the issues regarding veteran bus drivers, the conclusion of the reclassification from twenty-one, twenty-two, and start the process of a compensation and classification study. Or at the very least, be honest and let everyone know our district cannot support their fair wages. So we can make the best decision for our families and ourselves. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, do we have anyone available for the audience?
Yes, Madam President, we do have several speakers this evening for closed session, so I'm going to start with Ms. Satina Riggs. We'd like to welcome her to the podium this evening. And all of these items for all the speakers are related to negotiations in closed session.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me come and speak. So I came to tell you that I am proud of my department. They have been working since day one, doing one and two routes a day, even three. This is our schedule every day. They come in, they don't even know what they're gonna do today. But when you go to work, you expect to do the job that you were asked to do or that you applied to do, not two or three other, other, other positions. So I just wanted to say that I am very proud of my department. The mechanics have stepped up, working our buses, which they're not all that. So we have a few that are good, but not all of them. So we have more drivers, so we have to get more of our buses out there, but they, they have kept, kept us rolling. Then our office staff, they keep us together, because they're our hub, so we communicate with them. But I wanted you to know that it looks, it's, it hasn't been, for you guys, you don't know what's happening back there. And it's all good to you, but it's hard for us. And then to be told that we were gonna get something and we didn't. And people were hired with so much experience and came in at one, step one, which they shouldn't have. You have sixteen years, twenty-five years coming in, and they were hired at one. Now we have drivers coming in that are being bumped up higher than them, higher than me, higher than the people in the middle. So how do we feel? Unappreciated. We know what we're doing. The new ones are catching on because they're following what we do, but it's very hard. And when you're told something and you feel like somebody's telling you the truth and you feel like it's coming from the heart, but then to be slapped in the face. But we're still here. We are loyal, because we're still here, because we could go to Apple Valley. We could go to Victorville, Snowline, but we're here for our kids. I know I'm here for our kids. I've been here forever, and I just love it. That's my thing, to get every kid to school. And it's getting harder, because we don't have enough drivers. And we can't get sick. I just came back from being sick. Everybody's getting sick. They have families. And we just don't have enough. But you should really be proud and thankful to the drivers that we do have, that are loyal and are safe. They get our kids to school on time, in a safe manner. And I know it's, it's, it's very hard. And my voice, I'm just nervous. But I do want to, I did want to let you know, that you have the best drivers, because I really I can't see people just doing this every day, just taking on. And you're taking on other kids that you don't know, so they, you know how kids are with subs. And then you have to deal with that plus drive and get them there safely. So I just wanted to thank you for listening and give a shout out to the bus drivers, because they are awesome, and to the mechanics and our office staff. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to welcome Cynthia Reyes to the podium. She's, she, was she in the audience? Or, Mr. Sinatra, do you see her on Zoom?
I do not see them on Zoom.
Okay, we can come back, potentially. We'll check back in a minute. We'd like to welcome Angela Espino to the podium this evening.
Good evening, distinguished board, cabinet members, Adelanto staff and community. My name is Angela Espino. I've been with the district for seventeen years and the last ten in the library at Adelanto Elementary School. In March of this year, twenty-twenty-three, CSEA and the district's negotiations teams agreed and approved a change in rate of pay, new job title, updated job description, and the compensation for the years the library media coordinators have been working out of class. In yesterday's meeting, the district stalled out the agreed-upon terms with concerns of cost of having to pay retro. Although these concerns are valid, the terms of this agreement upon the MOU were carefully reviewed and evaluated before coming to the final agreement. Why weren't these concerns brought up during that time? We have been working harder than ever since the return to campus after the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Our responsibilities have increased significantly with the need of Chromebooks, new curriculum adoptions. Our responsibilities have continued to increase year after year. And during this time, we've worked hard to update our job description and classification to reflect the new responsibilities so that we are not working out of class. With these new responsibilities, our compensation must also be adjusted. We jumped through all the hoops presented to us from the district and from CSEA to prepare the documents. We did the research to support our efforts, and it was approved. Yet here we are, leading our case yet again. So we ask that the board insists that the district follow through with their agreement. We appreciate your continued support and we thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I know I saw Julie up there, but Julie, you put in a speaker card as well. Did you, would you like to speak this evening as well? Okay, we'd like to welcome Ms. Julie Grimm to the podium this evening.
Hi, everybody. My name's Julie Grimm. I'm the library media coordinator over at Milva Davis. I've been with you guys for over fifteen years. I was kind of shocked when I heard Diane speak. Okay. I'm here in hopes for a resolution concerning the completion of the reclass that was started twenty-twenty-one, but we've been working really, really hard ever since, e- even during COVID. We were in the schools, passing out, exchanging, fixing Chromebooks. And and that was our job. We were happy to take it on. Back when I started in two thousand and seven, we took on textbooks. That was something that was never barcoded. It was never tracked. They did a reclass for us back in two thousand and eight. They changed our title from specialist coordinator. They were supposed to give us a change in range, but that never happened. Back in two thousand and ten, just shortly after that, there was the district was having problems with money. There were cutbacks. The whole classified took a hit in money. I'm sure some of you remember that. And who was hit hard was librarians. We went one librarian for every two schools. The middle schools were cut down from eight hours to six hours. It was never returned. We have taken so many hits from the district, but we keep on going and we keep on pushing and we strive to be the best that we are. We are not just book pushers. We are not just scanners. We do much more for the children. I mean, we have parties in the library. I have kids that will come up to me. I, I'm their counselor. When they can't go to the teachers, they can't go to the office. Where do they go? They go to the library. Okay, we are important. I did a study on how much that we are supposed to be making compared to every single school within a one-hour drive. The average was twenty-three dollars. Barstow was a lot higher than we were. I was appalled. And it is a shame. And you wonder why our classified is so sad. It's, it's horrible. And to hear what Diane said, our classified need help. We are severely, severely neglected. I hope you take this into consideration. We are hoping that you will stand by us as we are asking for the district to go by what they offered us and what they agreed upon, because that is what's fair. Please stand by us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, we'd like to just check and see if Ms. Cynthia Reyes, did she, Mr. Sinatra, was she able to join via Zoom?
I do not see anyone with Cynthia Reyes. If they're under a different name, please raise your hand.
C-I-N-T-Y-A?
I see nobody, no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Madam President, at this time, that concludes our comments for a closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to section eight, recess to closed session. Trustees, can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
A motion that we go to closed session?
Turn around a second.
Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, aye.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Turner.
Turner, aye.
He Benz.
Benz, aye.
You La French.
La French, aye, and the time is six fifty-four and we're in closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We convene to open session. Call to order, the time is eight fifty-seven. Ms. Leve, can you take a roll call, please?
Trustee Benz.
Pre- present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present. A quorum has been established. We'll need to make a motion to extend our meeting, please.
Webster, I motion to extend our meeting to ten thirty.
Benz, I sec- second.
Ms. Leve, call for the vote, please.
Trustee Benz.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, aye.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye, motion passed five-zero. Moving on to section ten, closed sessions report. Ten oh-one. I do have something to report out. The board took action in closed session to accept the final settlement agreement for OAH, OAH case number two zero two, three zero six, zero three two one. It was moved by trustee Turner and seconded by trustee Benz. The vote was five-zero. Moving on to section eleven, public testimony. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers for ADTA?
Mr. Sinatra, is anyone in the online that's raising their hand for ADTA?
I do not see anybody at this time, no.
Not for ADTA. Madam President?
Do we have anyone for CSEA?
Mr. Sinatra, do you see anyone online for CSEA raising their hand?
I do not see anybody at this time, no.
No, Madam President, we do not for CSEA.
Do we have anyone in the audience or on Zoom land?
This time, we do not have any golden rods or anyone that had submitted online for open session. Madam President?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to section twelve, adoption of the minutes, twelve point zero one. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the board minutes for September the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three?
Soto, a motion that we approve?
May I get a second?
Turner, a second.
Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, aye.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye, motion passed five-zero. Moving on to section thirteen, the consent agenda. We're taking items thirteen point zero two through thirteen point two seven. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
Benz, I'd like, like to pull thirteen point two seven.
Anyone else?
I would like to pull thirteen. Oh, she did.
Yes, Benz pulled it.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda with the exception of thirteen point two seven?
Webster, I motion to approve the remaining consent agenda with the exclusion of thirteen point two seven.
Benz, I sec- second.
Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
I'm sorry, can we have discussion just really quick on the remain, main, meaning that we're gonna vote on? You, you usually don't.
Okay.
I just, I just want, wanted to tell, you know, out there, the, the, the audience that we are approving a lot of feed, 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 field trips. And the understand, standing is that all grades at all schools are to go on two feed, field trips a year or stud, study trips. So every grade at every school, if your grade at your school has not sched, scheduled, scheduled one, please do so, because it kind of hurts the kids when the other grades are go, going on. Because it kind of hurts the kids when the other grades are go, going on feed, field trips and theirs does not. So I just want, wanted to get, get that out so that it's clear. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Do we call for the vote?
I'll go ahead and.
Do we call for the vote, Ms. LeVey, please?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Moving on to Section fourteen, Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve thirteen point two seven?
Benz, I mo- motion to, to approve thirteen, thirteen point two seven.
Can I get a second?
So do I. Second, the motion.
Thank you. We're now open for discussion.
I honestly don't want discuss, discussion. I just want us to vote and get it through, if that's okay.
Okay. Would anyone else have any discussion? Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster accuses.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, nay.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed one, two, threes.
Three, two.
Three, two?
Three, one, one.
No, three, one.
One, one.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Section fifteen, New Business. Fifteen point zero one. Trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt resolution number two, three point two four point zero nine, authorizing the insurance of community facilities, District CFD, number four of Adelanto Elementary School, District twenty twenty-three, special tax bonds, Series A, school facilities federally tax exempt, and Series B, city slash water facilities federally tax exempt and federally taxable. May I get a motion?
Benz, I mo- motion to approve. Webster, I second.
Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz with no, no dis- discussion.
I.
And trustee LaFrench.
It's okay.
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero.
It's after nine o'clock.
Okay, moving on to Section fifteen point zero two. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the overtime settlement agreement with the California School Employee Association, CSEA.
Benz, I mo- motion to approve. Can I get a second?
So do I. Second.
So do I. We're now open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Moving right along to Section sixteen, Policy Introductions, Updates, and Readings. Sixteen point zero one. Trustees, I need a, I need a motion to adopt and approve the second read of Board Policy six one seven three, Education for Homeless Children.
Webster, I move to adopt and approve the second read of Board Policy sixty-one seventy-three, Education on Homeless Children.
Turner, I second.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Moving on to Section sixteen point zero two. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the second read of Administrative Regulation, AR six one seven three, Education for Homeless Children.
Webster, I move to adopt and approve the second read of Administrative Regulation sixty-one seventy-three, Education for Homeless Children.
So do I. Second time motion.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Sixteen point zero three. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the second read of Board Policy six one seven three point one, Education for Foster Youth.
Turner, I motion to approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Sixteen point zero four. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the second read of Administrative Regulation six one seven three point one, Education for Foster Youth.
Webster, I move to adopt and approve the second read of AR sixty-one seventy-three point one, Education on Foster Youth. Uh, Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Sixteen point zero five. Trustees, I need a motion to approve, to adopt and approve the first read of Board Policy five one three one, Conduct.
Uh, Benz, I mo- motion to approve.
Soto, I second time motion.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero, sixteen point zero six. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first read of Board Policy five one three one point six, Alcohol and Other Drugs.
Webster, I motion to adopt and approve the first read of Board Policy fifty-one thirty-one point six, Alcohol and Other Drugs. Ben, I'm sorry. Uh, Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Sixteen point zero seven. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first read of Administrative Regulation five one three one point six, Alcohol and Other Drugs.
Webster, I move to adopt and approve the first read of AR fifty-one thirty-one point six, Alcohol and Other Drugs.
Soto, I second time motion.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Sixteen point zero eight. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first read of Board Policy five one three one point seven, Weapons and Dangerous Instruments.
Benz, I motion to approve.
Turner, I second.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Mrs. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Sixteen point zero nine. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first read of Administrative Regulation five one three one point seven, Weapons and Dangerous Instruments.
Benz, I motion to approve.
Soto, I second time motion.
We're open for a discussion. Hearing none. Mrs. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner? Trustee Turner, I didn't hear you.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed five zero. Moving on to Section seventeen, Governing Board Members Reports and Announcements. Seventeen point zero one. Trustee Soto, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'll be withholding my comments for the next meeting. Thank you.
Trustee Webster?
Okay. Good evening, AES friends and family. Uh, first, I would like to once again extend my gratitude to those celebrating the twenty-fifth and thirty-year recognitions tonight. And thank those individuals for their time and commitment. I do again want to say it's great to see the number of trips our kiddos are going to be attending this year and the memories we know we will be making. In the last week, it has been a busy endeavor. I want to begin by acknowledging our Mesa Linda staff and ASB Club for the Around the World Dance. I want to say a special thanks to our art students over there who provided amazing decor for our dance with multiple flags. And thank you to many teachers and staff taking part, supporting and participating. I want to issue a special thank you to Ms. Cummings for being so supportive and encouraging to her students, and I look forward to the events that they have planned in the future. A special thank you to our ASB President Kirwin over at Mesa Linda for coming over and extending our invitation at our last board meeting. I want to take a moment, um, to recognize our Gus Franklin Falcons, which is always a delight being able to see those around and the awesome things that site has going on. I look forward to their Fall Festival that will be October twenty-seventh. Anyone up for a fun night? Please mark your calendars. Another exciting thing coming out of Gus is their kindness trip they rewarded students with last Friday. I want to thank those indivi- individuals for taking their time and putting that trip together for those students. Over at our Adelanto Elementary School, our crazy cougars enjoyed a PBIS dance last week as well. We're able to jam out with our students while celebrating our good behavior. It is always a pleasure seeing the PTA over there helping with these fun dances and our kiddos. A special shout out to Mr. Rizzo for his amazing DJ skills. While there, I was also able to swing by our HOPE program and hear about the many great things they are doing and the share circles they are out encouraging at different sites. Thank you, ladies, for all of your hard work and being such great mentors. I want to finish up my schools with my George Eagles. This was all, this school always amazes me with the creative ideas they come up with for our students. I want to take a special moment to thank Ms. Braille for the invitation to the Third Annual Kindergarten Fashion Show. This event was truly amazing as the creativity the kids had along with the dance abilities was priceless. The kids also celebrated ABC Boot Camp graduation and got those awards to show it. Thank you again for the invitation and allowing me the opportunity to be there with you all. George has also recently opened the George Enrichment Oasis, allowing for a room for small groups and more detailed care for students' academics. The classroom is set up so nicely and I think it provides a great advantage for those students at George. Tomorrow night, I will be celebrating with our ten schools who did place with PBIS over in Apple Valley. An additional congratulations to all of our place, placed schools. Um, and I will see you there tomorrow. In closing tonight, I want to say thank you to all of those individuals I have mentioned tonight and many more for the amazing work that we are doing for our students. The dedication you have for their growth and the impact you make. I hope everyone has a great night and a wonderful rest of the week. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Who would like to go next?
Okay, uh, I have to concur with my fellow trustees. Um, I would like to congratulate our twenty-five and thirty, um, year employees. You know, it just shows longevity in our district and, you know, I'm really happy to, um, acknowledge and congratulate those employees for sticking it out with us and giving their a hundred percent of their dedication to our students and our staff in whatever capacity, and there was several capacity. So thank you again for, um, all of your years of service. And, uh, for those that didn't make it, congratulations to you too. I asked Mr. Our superintendent to bring that video, uh, of Columbia on the suicide prevention. Um, I, I felt that that was important, you know, for us to share that video and, um, I agree with President LaFrench that it should be shown at all of our schools. It's a little sad, but it's something that we need to talk about because it's a conversation that we do not talk about enough. You know, our children are suffering, not only our children, but some adults are suffering as well. So when you see something and you hear something, say something, and give a big hug, because sometime that's what they need, a big hug. Um, our children are going through a lot these days and so we have to be mindful of that. And I love that our superintendent, our model for this year, uh, cultivated creative kindness. I know social media could be really mean at times and, you know, and they can hide behind a name and, 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 and never show your face. But words hurt and our children have not learned how to deal with words. So again, thank you, Columbia. Thank you, teachers, administrators for taking the time and students to put that video together. Believe me, it, it, it was a great impact. Um, I, I have to agree with trustee, uh, President LaFrench. I watched it several times. And every time I watch it, you know, I get emotional because it's the truth. I had an opportunity to visit, uh, Mesa Linda, uh, with Mr. Kraus last week. And I have to say, um, you know, we've, Mesa Linda's come a long ways and, um, happy, you know, we still have issues as we do at at all schools, but, um, I just want to say to, uh, Mrs. Topseed and, um, Mr. Forbes and the other administrators there, you know, keep up the good work, you know, um, our students need you. We need to motivate our students and I see the control. Um, I see that things are not haywire like they used to be in the past. Um, I want to bring that creative kindness and that student involvement to our middle schools, all of our schools because sometime that's all our kids have. You know, a lot of kids don't have the PlayStations and the phones to entertain, so I would like to, um, encourage, you know, uh, participation and involvement in our school sites. Um, I was able to stop by our job fair. Well, it wasn't our job fair, it's San Bernardino County Job Fair at the Victor Valley Mall. Um, and it was a great turnout. I was only there for a short period of time, but, you know, I saw some great. you know, I saw some great things there and saw people really wanna look for a job. There was a lot of different companies there. So um, that was very impressive. Um, say what else? Uh, am I missing anything? Thank you. I I I just got the word to end my conversation, my comments. So everyone um in Zoom land, uh, have a good rest of your evening and drive safe.
Thank you. Trustee Turner.
Now trustee Benz, cuz I will not follow trustee Web- Webster with her one wonderful speech because I'm like, I don't know what I'm gonna say. I'm like, uh, uh, first thing I do want to congratulate, and I wanna thank those who have stuck with the dis- district for twenty-five to third thirty years, that that is a long time and your ser- service to this dis- district is appreciated ver- very much. Um, I also, you know, again, with the vid- video, um, su- suicide is, it sticks with you, you know, some people, I guess they think that things would be bet- better off if they've passed and it's not because the pain is always there to those who are left beyond be be behind, always. Um, my my friend, it's been nineteen ninety-five. And once in a while, we s- still think about him, still miss him cuz he really, he was a bright light, but he hid his pain, so. Ask those ques- questions because hopefully you help your friends. Um, what else? I I really, um, I am excited, excited for the the interse- session for the fall fall break and the wind wind winter break. Um, I really feel that our dis- district is really work working to improve things for our students and our staff. You know, work work working with Miss Mr. Kraus, you know, his inten- tensions are always true. He he always, you know, if if you were to look up boy Boy Scout, I guess, in the dic- dictionary, you would see his pic- picture there. And not in a bad way, in a good way because he really has an open heart and he really, his intent tensions are true. So I am proud to stand by him and all that he he does. Um, I feel like a big heel cuz I forgot to wish him a happy birthday on his birthday. I know, and so, and Doc, Dr. Dwyson too. I think we should have had a big part, party or something for something. Okay, that sounds good. But I I do stand by Mr. Kraus and for those who think that he is not gen- genuine in his actions, I have to say they they are gravely mistaken. And with that, please have a good night.
Thank you, trustee Benz. I first and foremost want to give a shout out to the bus drivers, the maintenance people, and the administrators back in the back, and I will be out there to visit you soon. I wanna say congratulations are for us, we are, we are grateful and thankful for our twenty-five year and our thirty um year people of service. I wanna say um enjoy your fall break. I don't get one, so at least some of us will be able to stay at home next week. I will be still on the fifteen freeway at six o'clock in the morning, so I can only wish to be at home. And let me see. I'm excited about the groundbreaking this um, this Saturday. Um, look forward to seeing everyone there. And I will um end my comments with saying, you know, everyone drive safe, have a nice um vacation. Or uh, and then I have Ms. uh trustee Turner, she's going to uh closes out. She has something else that she would like to say. Ms. Turner.
Thank you, President LaFrench, you know, I I'm old and I'm kinda forgetful over here, but I just wanna um Westside Park, thank you for your presentation. Um, the one book, um, one book, one school presentation was absolutely incredible. To see children reading at a young age is is a phenomenal, um, they've learning to read and then they'll read to learn. And what you're doing there is phenomenal. I'm sorry that I missed uh your cultural, the Hispanic cultural, and I know that it was a ph- phenomenal presentation because you always put on a great assembly um for those cultural events. Um, and I was also like to say that I did attend the bus drivers' meeting last week along with Mr. Kraus and heard some pretty interesting things and I'm happy to report that we have added some bus stops um on our major streets that our children no longer have to cross the streets in order to catch the bus. Um, and I was also able to celebrate the present, the birthday celebration for Dr. Dwyson and Mr. Kraus. Um, staff put on a wonderful spread for them. It was incredible. The food was delicious and it was a great celebration and the cake was phenomenal. Dr. Dwyson had a um, um, a carrot cake and Mr. Kraus had a chocolate cake with a cake with 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 cupcakes around it. Okay, so it was, it was incredible. I had a good time. Yeah, so, um, thank you. I guess I'm special. But thank you, President LaFrench, for letting me. I knew I'm forgetting something. So thank you for letting me finish my comments and again, everyone have a good night.
Okay, thank you very much, and at this time, we would like to um wish Dr. Dwyson and Mr. Kraus a happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Stop writing an email, Mr. Kraus. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Kraus.
Happy birthday, Dwyson. Happy birthday to you.
Okay, moving right along to eighteen point zero one, adjournment, trustees, I need a motion to adjourn.
Webster, I motion to adjourn.
Turner, I second.
Any discussion?
We gotta talk about it.
Mrs. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I, motion pass five zero, please enjoy your vacations and sleep well, drive safe. Thank you.
Madam President, the time is nine thirty. Have a good evening, everyone.
I wrote it down too. Nine thirty, thank you.
You're welcome.